When I took office, we had three challenges that were facing difficult challenges in the first year. First is garbage and recycling, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Second, we have an expense issue in the city of Quincy. If we continue to spend money at the same rate we're spending now, according to projections, next year we're out of cash. And third, our property tax level. More and more, as I'm sure you've read in the paper today, pension obligations are eating away at our property taxes. We're in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and even early 2000s. We used to levy for general operations on our tax levy. Now our tax levy is getting eaten away by pension obligations. So, all three of these things are tied together, and we need to tackle one before we can tackle the other. And if we don't make a decision, say, on garbage or recycling, that makes our decision at budget time that much more harder. And why are we in this situation? In 2001, the city of Quincy purchased nine garbage trucks for the tune of $1 million. Paid off that loan in 2006. Since 2006, the city has not set aside money to pay for new garbage and recycling trucks. Since that time, our cash reserves have been depleted. We lost $5 million from hydro. Our cash, two years ago, we put $1.45 million out of our cash reserves into paying for one of our hydro bonds. Over the next three years, this year, the next year, and the year after that, we need to put $500,000 of our money to pay the rest of the hydro debt off. So that leaves us with very few options. Cost of borrowing trucks, we need to come up with money. How do we do that? We can come up with money three ways. One, revenue. Two, we can absorb costs into our existing programs. And three, we can put it on your property taxes. That's how we can do that. The issue with the garbage and recycle is in 1991, we instituted, or the city of Quincy instituted, a garbage sticker program. And at the time, it was to pay for our recycling program. The first full year that it was implemented brought in $425,000 to the city. The cost now that we get in, or the revenue that we get in now, has been $600,000, and it's been flat since 2004. So $600,000, at the same time, the challenge is we're levying less and less for our operations from your property tax levy. So in 2004, we levied about $1.2 million that went into operations, operating our general fund. But today, that's zero. And it's zero because of our pensions, it's zero because of our debt, and it's going to continue to have that challenge. Right now, the net cost for our garbage and recycle program, if you take what we bring in in garbage stickers, and you take the revenue that we receive from selling recyclables, the net cost to the budget is about, over the last four years, averaged $850,000. This year alone, the projected cost is $1 million. Why is that important? Because we need to borrow new trucks. To borrow new trucks, that million dollars, the net cost, climbs to $1.7 million.
Do you mean borrow or buy new trucks?
We need to buy new trucks. We need to, oh, sorry, we need to buy new trucks. Thanks for correcting me. We need to buy new trucks. And so if we buy new trucks, that climbs to $1.7 million. Which means we need to, if we do nothing, we need to find money from other departments in order to fund it. Our trucks are 13 years old, and we're spending over $285,000 a year in maintenance. A truck with the same capabilities would cost us about $160,000 a year. A loan payment for all nine trucks would be $300,000 a year over a seven-year period. So the question becomes, what do we do if we do nothing and that deficit level increases? Where do we take it from?
Kyle?
Yes?
Got a question.
Yes.
$160,000 garbage truck purchase, would that be the low end, medium, or high end garbage truck?
That's low end. That's what we have today.
That's low end.
That's what we have today, that actually uses the trucks.
So the low end will not last as long as the high end, I assume?
Yeah, I would imagine. The average lifespan on a truck is six to seven, or it's about five to seven, five to seven years. If I start coming out, wave your hands if I start, if you can hear me.
I have a question. I know you're trying to get to me, but you're talking about buying trucks. The school system, rent school buses, can't take a lease?
The lease option for garbage and recycle trucks is the same amount of payment, and we would be able to buy them back for once. So it is not cheaper to lease. Essentially, for garbage and recycling, the lease, it's a financing option.
Tell me, how come if you didn't, you all, all of the New Orleans, all this time, why didn't they buy a garbage truck every year, two years? Always reason there wasn't a...
Well, I think it's important for the, for the city council. You know, all, you know, part-time, you know, part-time elected officials. And it's hard for them to vote on something that's not presented to them. And the options, these numbers that we're sharing, were never presented to the old. We never had that discussion. I was on the council for four years. We did start in 2012 to form a garbage and recycling committee to look at all these options. So we have been studying this for more than a year. Hold on, let me get through this and then answer your questions. As I said, why is it important, why is it important to know our financial outlook? I talked to you about our budget. According to our estimates, if we continue to spend at the rate we're spending, over the next five years, next year, we would start with $1.1 million in the bank. That, by the end of the year, we would have a negative $2 million cash balance. And by 2019, we would be in a hole for $22 million. $22 million. So, if we don't do anything with our revenue source, and we continue to keep expenses the same, we're going to be losing money, so we need to make a change on expenses, and that's across the board. We talked about our tax levy. A lot of people have said, why don't we place it on the tax levy? That's what was done before. To put the payment on your tax levy would be a 5.3% increase in your property taxes. 5.3%. And that's not including what we have to pay for pension obligations and our city debt. In this graph here, the red line is our pension obligation since 2002. That level has climbed to an astronomical amount, to where now on our property tax levy, we are facing a decision this year, for the first time in my memory, and I think in recent memory, where we have to dive in toward general operations in order to fund our obligations for the tax levy. And so, we could put it on the tax levy, but that would mean an additional 5% increase for what we already have to levy for pensions. If you, have we passed House of Engineers? So here's the decision that we're having in the city. If we want to make sure that, if we continue to service, or where do we go from here? We're providing you the same level of service for a cost that meets your needs, a cost that's powerful to you. And a few weeks ago, we presented options, and we presented options to the city to look at. And I think a lot of times it's been misconstrued that I'm saying, we have to do this. That's not what I'm saying. We are saying that here's the options to go forward. And some of you may have a sheet. Now explain these options. First is continue with the existing system. To continue with the existing system, buying nine trucks, that's city Quincy option number two. That would cost us on the annual basis of $2.81 million. That's buying new trucks, setting money aside for the replacement vehicles, so no administration is faced with this decision again, an all-or-nothing decision, and we have rising costs in our landfill fees. So $2.81 million. If as a community, we decide that we want to break even on our garbage and recycling service, we would need to raise the garbage stickers to $2.30 a sticker. Now here's the challenge with that. The challenge in $2.30 a sticker, under our existing laws, we have an ordinance in the book that says the city of Quincy should be the sole provider of waste management to your lawn. The sole provider. But we don't enforce that ordinance now. And so if we creep our stickers up to $1.50, to $2.30, and we don't enforce our own ordinance, that means we're going to be spending $2.81 million a year on fewer and fewer customers. Because customers are going to be saying, I'm spending $20 a month in garbage stickers. I might as well hire a private hauler and I don't have to go to the store and buy. And so we have to be cognizant. We can raise the sticker fee, but we have to be cognizant that if we make a choice not to inform our own ordinance, we're not being wise stewards of your tax dollar, because we're going to be spending more and more on fewer and fewer people. Yes?
You're on this point. And then in fact, illegal for people to use those two services sometimes? Is that illegal?
It's illegal to provide the service, and there are more than two in town. There are more than two in town.
So if you enforce your own ordinance, you would collect back all those fees?
That's right. And so perhaps, and we'll go over some options, but perhaps the thing to say is, okay, we're going to raise the stickers to, say, $1.50, and enforce our own ordinance. And that means instead of 8,600 customers, which we service right now, we're servicing 15,000 customers. So then the revenue increases because you raise the stickers and you have money for trucks. So that is an option. Other options that we put in?
But Kyle, if you do that, do you have more wear and tear on the trucks, and you have to buy more trucks?
Well, that's correct. I mean, there's, you know, for everything, we have nine trucks now for 8,600 customers.
It's not fair that you're driving past a lot of these customers who are...
Well, that's, that's a good point. The point being is that, for the first time in recent history, we would service all 15,000. There may be some costs for that that we don't know about, because we haven't done a profit and loss statement on a program yet. Services all 15,000 of our residents, but we can certainly try and stick our toes in the water. If we say, hey, this isn't working, we need to buy a 10th truck, an 11th truck, we can do that. Hold on one second, let me get through this and then answer more questions. The other options that we have, we have a pay issue for a netting right now, which charges per bag. The issue we have with that, from a corporate level, is that it causes extreme danger for our workers. The workers' compensation claims for the last, since 2009, have been $360,000 for workers' compensation claims. Our workers are picking bags up and throwing them in the, and throwing them in the truck. That's also not aesthetically reasonable. Most cities and most private companies providing the service do it with a tote system. They do it because it's better for their workers, less workers comp, more efficient planning. So we said, okay, before we expend ourselves, before we borrow for money, let's take a look at what improved technologies will do. And the option number one on your sheet, city Quincy option number one, is if we decided to go ahead and go to a tote system, that would cost us $2.49 million. Now it's important to know on the city Quincy option number two, it's $2.81 million. To go to a tote system is $2.49 million. If our existing customers utilize that, it would be $24.09 a month for our customers. Then we said it also makes sense to see what would a private hauler do for the city of Quincy. Maybe we want to go that way. Company A on your sheet proposes a 10-year price. And how do we do a 10-year price for all these plans? We take in the projected cost, weight cost in the first year, and the cost adjustments that these companies are charging us, averaging that out over a 10-year period and giving a flat rate. So all these rates that are seen as a flat rate and will not be charged more over a 10-year period. Yes?
Do those costs jump through the fuel, environmental charges in the city campus?
Yes. That does. Yes.
Why are these costs so much more than the charge?
Well, I don't know how St. Louis does it. One of the things about getting all 15,000 homes into one system is that you increase your buying pattern. And so, for example, right now, the 5,000 more people who utilize private haulers now spend anywhere between $20 and $30 a month themselves. And so these plans, company A, which would offer not only 95-gallon tote, but you'd be able to recycle glass at your home, you could do, have two citywide cleanups, it would be $13.20 a month locked in for 10 years. Company B has said we can provide that for $12.28, utilizing a 35-gallon tote and keeping our city sticker system in place. That way, we can encourage recycling. People have more than three kitchen bags, which is what fits in those 35 gallons, then they can go to the store, buy a 50-cent sticker, and do that. There has been options, as you can see, for a drop-off facility location, and that's on your sheet. And that price range is anywhere from $12.69 a house on up. What I think, what this month and what this conversation back and forth with customers has been, is to see, what are some ideas that perhaps my administration didn't think about, or perhaps some authority didn't think about? Because I said from the get-go, if somebody has some idea, you know, we don't know them, good ideas will begin and end at the city hall. And so we're going to propose any idea that's been brought forward. And so what we said, the number one thing I heard, is our personal seniors are on fixed income. And I certainly understand that. And so one of the proposals that we've looked at, one of the proposals that we've looked at is a homestead exemption for seniors that utilize a homestead exemption for your property taxes. That would service about 3,300 senior citizens. To do a flat rate for consumers at their house of either $14.21 or about $13 a month, and to charge seniors $10. Now that $10 would be about one bag a week if we raised stickers to $2.30.
Kyle?
Yes?
Question. Variable cost. So if a sticker we're going to go to $2.30 today?
Yes.
What is the guarantee that it will not be raised in the next 10 years? How is that?
Well, I would say that there's no guarantee on variable costs. What we tried to do is we tried to average down our expenses over 10 years and say, this is what we can, this is what we can save, would be the best guess on a 10-year rate for stickers, $2.30. And we've got two slides, hold on a second. So a homestead exemption for senior citizens, that says, one bag a week at a new cost rate would be about $9.33 a month. So charge seniors $10, and $14.21, $13 for everyone else. One of the ideas that I had not thought about, you can see on your sheets, that going to a tote system is by far a less expensive option for the city of Quincy. But the problem is, and the other thing that I've heard from decisions, I don't think it's fair, if I'm single, that I pay the same amount for a family of five.
That's what I agree.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. That's right.
There's a lady next to me that has six kids. They have about 20 bags, and I have two bags.
Sure. So how do we, how do we do that with a tote system? Because it's hard, it's hard to place a garbage sticker in a tote.
What do you mean by tote system?
Tote system is a, is a container. A container. You see the blue and the brown containers that are in the purple side?
And where do you put your recycling?
In the same, in the same container. And we have two separate containers now.
Do you personally know anybody that does that system?
I do.
I hate her.
Okay. Well, one of the, one of the options, if we went to privatization, and wanted to just, and wanted to charge for the water, would be to tie to water usage in the home, with the thinking that a single person utilizes less water, generates less trash than a family of five. And what would that look like? For the cost of the program, it would be about $2 a unit. You can look on your water bills. To give you some examples, a senior, a senior citizen couple who utilizes eight units of water per quarter would be charged $6 a month under that system, by judging their water use over a year. A couple in their 30s with a toddler at home would be charged $11.30 a month based on their water usage. They use, utilize 15 units per quarter, I averaged over the last year. A family of five with young kids at home, on average, utilizes 22 units per quarter, they could be charged $16.57 for that. A family of five with teenagers at home utilizes a lot of water, generates a lot of trash, utilizes 32 units per quarter, would be about $24 a month. So this is an option. Again, it's hard to tie usage to a tote system, because we can't put garbage stickers on a tote. But this would be a way to say, if you're a single person, if you're retired, you're going to utilize less water, you're going to generate less trash, and so now you will be charged less than a family of five who utilizes more water, utilizes more trash. That also works for conservation Quincy.
You keep talking about the number of people, these seniors, along with, do you know the number of families in Quincy that have garbage load, off-her-weather income?
It's quite a bit.
Oh, I looked it up. Now, how are those families able to provide and be able to pay the suggested costs?
Well, maybe they'd be encouraged to not waste water.
Oh, hold on, hold on. Yes? Hold on. Yeah.
One more thing, obviously, very significant, and if this is, why aren't you putting it on a ballot in Marquette?
You know, the, the options that were presented here are giving you an open look at what the city of Quincy faces. The city of Quincy can't continue with the same service. It just means that we have to find money for it. And that money for it is about $700,000. And that's an option, but that also means that we need to know that we've got to take that from other programs. If the option is no revenue, we can do that, but that means other programs will be affected by it.
You're saying the shortfall is $700,000 annually?
The shortfall right now, the shortfall right now is $850,000 annually. But even if we're okay with that level, we still have to find money to borrow for trucks. We still have to find money to buy trucks. Our trucks are 13 years old. One truck is not going to pass inspection here next month. These trucks need replacements, so we're going to continue to provide service. We need trucks to get to homes.
Mr. Mayor, I want to ask you a question. For a couple of comments. I looked at the packet that you distributed online through the city's website, I believe, to the press. I looked at every single page of that, and in particular, the detailed last page of that. We've got the cost structures all in a table, now projected past 2024. And what I noticed is that you've really accelerated the costs in those out years. In the past, the past five years, for instance, salaries and benefits have risen about 20%. You've got them rising the next five years over 30%. And in all of those out years, January and January, you're projecting wild increases in costs. And you're using that 10-year projection to come up with an average monthly cost for the city of Quincy of $24.99 or $19.93. And I'm suggesting that it seems like you're kind of stampeding us into privatizing the city's garbage service.
Yes.
And making the numbers. And the numbers look much worse than they actually are. I'm not suggesting that there's not a budget shortfall, but one other comment I want to make, Charlie, is that when you take the $845,000 general fund shortfall, and you get rid of it by shifting it on the citizens, 70% of whom, I think, in this city, their kids qualify for preschool lunches, you're transferring a burden from the wealthy to the poor.
Yes. Well, I don't think, I wonder if the intent was not to ramrod anything, to overinflate things. The issue that we have, since we started this discussion on looking at private options, we talked to the city council, and the city council, they now want us to hire back people who were on garbage and recycle. We usually have 10 crew members who are on garbage and recycle. Right now, we're down to seven, and we're pulling from other departments. So we would have to hire back crew positions to make sure that we could continue to deliver the service if we wanted to deliver the same service to our sewers, our sidewalks, our tree groups. And so that's what we've done. While we're looking at this, we've said, okay, let's stop, let's stop hiring people. That way, if we do make a decision, nobody's out of job. And the intent, you know, the, while we're in this situation, because we have now had an honest look at our finances in the city of Quincy, an honest look to look at what we're projecting. And we've been elected to be the corporate board members of your government, you're the shareholders.
You're projecting extreme costs, and then you're coming up with this average 10-year cost, average cost, that's inflated, because you inflated the numbers in the out years.
Okay. Well, one of, I mean, I think they compounded them, so that was, that was highlighted. But even that, so a truck, a truck payment, if we make a loan, it's $300,000 if we borrow it. If we set money aside for new trucks, we have to do about $300,000. That's why that would climb to $1.7 million. So even if we're buying trucks, we have to come up with $300,000.
But that's offset, that offsets, you know, part, the $250,000 annually, $251,000 annual in repair costs on these trucks. So that's cost of repairs on 13-year-old trucks goes down drastically when you have a fleet.
That's right. And what we did when we looked at, when we looked at the fleet maintenance, we looked at our fleet maintenance in 2002, what it cost us the year after we bought all the trucks. And that's how we, that's how we came up with our first year maintenance on this farm for that. Yes?
Okay, looking at the, okay, we have Quincy, and then we have company A, and company B. Why are we putting $15,000 households on A and B and not for, if you're going to call them a petizer and make everybody follow that, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z? Then we should do it for that too. You look at that, you look at those costs. I did a cost analysis of it myself. It's just that, for you, people would say, a dollar on a sticker. And the average family had three bags of garbage per week, $144 per year. Multiply that by the 15,000 households, that comes to a total of approximately $2,116,000, just for a dollar per sticker. And it's been a call, why would we do that for the city of Quincy? I mean, why would it be $600 versus $15,000?
The reason for the, yeah. The reason for the $800 was to give you an idea of what can service today. The cost to service, the cost to service 15,000 on the tote system, of course, you're looking at, frankly, would be a pilot program. We never, one, never had toots, and two, we haven't serviced 15,000 people. And as I said in the beginning, if we can choose to raise our sticker prices and enforce our own ordinance, and that would take care of a lot of the issues. But that also means that the people who have private haulers, none of them would be able to use it.
Do we know how many people in the city of Quincy have private haulers? About six to 10?
I'd say it's about, I'd say it's five to six thousand.
Okay, so, the people who have private haulers, their cost of action will down.
That's right.
Now, my other question is, why do businesses outsource services to private? Why do they do that? Because it's more efficient. And that's what we are looking at, is efficiency. Problem is, that nobody knows that the variable costs are going to be for the city of Quincy over the next 10 years. What is the guess going to be 10 years from now? Maintenance, unemployment, workers' comp, we don't know. If we can tie in things' cost for 10 years, I think it's a win-win situation. I will also tell you, the other day, I was going down East West Road, and it was very windy, and I saw a trash falling off over our recycling.
Yes, sir, that's right.
I think you're wrong.
Okay, you know, we can, we can agree to disagree. We have to do it some way. That's the point, it's the last word we heard, and also, to know if anybody has any ideas that we haven't thought of. Yes? Hold on one second.
Two, just thirty costs, by line of, if it's not actual, like, ingredients, actual budget, why don't you present that to the people and be able to show them where your money is, or their money is going? And right now, you're shooting everybody in the block.
Yes?
Are you saying that trash dollars do a city of New York, the whole city has to pay? Or am I going to have to buy the trash?
No, it would be weekly. Yes, sir.
Do you put trash?
What's that? Well, we probably have to hire more, there's probably a lot of hot. If we, if we service all of the city of Quincy, we would have to hire more, we would have to hire more people. We couldn't do it with our existing crew. Yes?
Mr. Mayor? If you have to hire more people, do you have to buy more trucks?
Ah, yes, we'd have to buy more trucks.
Mr. Mayor?
If we double necessarily, it's...
How many hours do they work at that?
My wife and I, I'm a senior citizen, we use three stickers a month, three stickers a month, and a buck and a half. Buck and a half. When you, when you ran for mayor, I was a Tea Party person. You said you would not raise taxes. You said you would not raise taxes. You said you would not raise taxes.
Well, I don't know if I ever said I wouldn't raise taxes.
That's what Tea Party stands for.
But I didn't run for Tea Party then.
Yes, you are a Tea Party person.
Um, no, I'm, 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 sir.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing I want to say is, when you try and institute a private flat rate, you're running plain. You do a couple of bad things economically. Not just shifting cost from the sales tax, which provides most of the debt, well, two-thirds of the debt is provided by sales tax. You're shifting that, not what you're concerned. But the only, the only thing we're doing... But the only, the only thing we're doing when you privatize and create a plant monthly rate, you're decoupling recycling from the economic incentive to recycle.
Shouldn't you be allowed to finish your presentation? I respect for your offer.
Yeah, it's, well, now it's the end of the presentation, so thank you very much. Out to the general. That would be on the log.
The way they change, the city, the plan that pays the cities by doing that, they don't know what's right.
No, the city, the city will bill out on emergency mortgages, and so that's included in the cost. The vendor gets paid from, the vendor builds your city, and the city pays the vendor to rebuild it for them.
Okay, but like, now vendor then gets something for that service?
Uh, you mean, they charge us.
No, the other way around, that's what I do, not pay for it.
Oh, no, that's, that's, if we were, if we were to, if we were to bill, they would charge us more. So they charge us less than we're going to bill them. Yes, sir.
I think a lot of the conversation should focus around recycling. I think that Quincy should become a recycling city, and make it not be a public, a public forum, or have public, where I would like to do, that carries recycling. And my business wants the city to allow me to put recycling containers up front. I've reduced my usage of a dumpster to a third, and the same thing can happen in households. Raising the cost of the sticker, which should have been done responsibly over a period of years, from $0.50 to $1,000 to $1.50, just like everything else goes up. Recycling is a curse. As soon as you use a tow, everything goes in the tow, recycling goes out the window. I think we're a proud city. I've got recycling, we have a paper gate, we're sitting in the parking lot, we're being, I'm not sure how ordinary it works, but I think that the conversation ought to start with recycling, and then go forward from there.
Yes.
First of all, I would ask any person, for her, why can't we do a great job? They are, every week, they're, they're purly, they're great job, they never leave a mess, their trucks are all over the streets, like the other one. No, they are, my guys are fabulous, and I thank you guys, and we need to support them. They are, you know, but they live in the city, they pay taxes, they're employees, and they need to be respected, and thank you guys very much.
I think it's, I'm, 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 nobody's saying that our, the men who work on our garbage recycling trust, you know, they're a good job. In fact, I've heard nothing but great things about them. And a part of, if we were to privatize, it would be to make sure that if somebody has a job at the city of Quincy now, they can still keep going. Um, you know, and so this is to give them the tools they need to do the job, and to do it effectively. And so that's, you know, none of this conversation, none of the conversation was ever that our individual guys aren't doing a good job, it's looking at what are our corporate seasons, what, how can we pay for new equipment? And you have to give back, sir.
I mean, I'm curious, what is the, where is the revenue, the operating revenue for the solid waste department coming from? Where is it coming from?
The, the, the revenue from, that comes out of our general operations, and it comes from the sale of the garbage.
There's no way that you can, you can convince me, and I know a lot of people here who are, once you're, are intelligent and are educated people, I pay less by all of the money for the city to come to my house, four times a week, with a few different trucks. I, I've got a good idea what it costs to run the truck, and that's not even feasible. I mean, you're providing service, and you're not charging, and that's why the city is where it's at. And to have a sticker system, I mean, I think is, is not very wise either. You need to build it out, you got a building system, you got a water, it comes every three months, if you want to make it every two months. But the thing is, you can charge the citizens of Quincy $15 a month, implement a cart program, it costs $3,500 to put a cart tipper on the back of a garbage truck, that's all it costs. I don't know where the numbers you came up with come from. But if you buy five trucks now, and you wait two years, and you limp along with what you got, and then you buy four more trucks, get it on a rotating schedule, implement the carts neighborhood by neighborhood, you can't do it all at once, it gets too much money to go buy three semi-truckloads of carts. The carts are $65 a piece. If you implement the program in a rotating program, where eventually, over five years, you have a plan for you, and eventually, in five years, everybody's got a cart, which is a good idea. It's the only way to go. But to go to a 90-gallon cart, that's not very feasible. Well, I've got a 72-year-old dad, that he's not going to be physically able to roll a 90-gallon cart, which is this tall, out to the street in the winter time. But with a 65-gallon cart? All the proposals, you can go 95, you can go 65, you can go 35 gallons, so there can't be smaller carts. We just wanted to compare apples to apples. Yeah.
Hold on, hold on, um, sorry, this, yes, one second. Mr. Mayor, we're talking about a good two.
Do we have a franchise fee against the recharge, like, I guess?
I don't know, I don't think we do.
If we don't, we should, you know?
Yeah, I don't think we do.
I don't know why, you know, if they're picking up the most of $70,000. We charge the franchise fee to the utility companies, the maintenance companies. We should have that mentioned again.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I don't know if I'm the only person here tonight who is confused about the costs and revenue issue. This handout shows cost figures. I really need to see a cash flow handout, which shows where, I've been told by one of the aldermen that we get money from the county, and the state, and the other governments, which are providing funds, revenues. I need to see the revenues.
For the entire city, or just for this one?
For garbage blocks.
Okay.
I need to see the, like, cash flow, where does the revenue come from, and along with these costs?
Sure, we have that real line, but if you don't have a line, you can leave drivers here, I'll make sure I get one.
Well, he's not the only one that needs that.
It's all their line.
Well, some people don't have.
And if they don't, they can call my office and we'll tell them. No problem. No problem, no problem. Uh, you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if you made proposals for less than 90 gallons, would you therefore consider?
If a family needed a 32-gallon tow, the rate would be less, that's something that, that's something other communities need, that we need to consider, that's how a problem. Other communities, especially, you pay one for one-size tow, additional amount if the tow's larger, additional for the largest, so other communities have it.
One of the builders is a neighbor of mine, and I know he loves the terms of tow's, but I think they are lovely, and we all enjoy seeing the orange tow's laying around three days after the recycling truck's been mine, it's only been exaggerated with more large tow's everywhere.
Yeah, we have to drive.
Yeah.
Get them right here when they start.
These 95-gallon tow's are big tow's, and you're going to give me two 95-gallon tow's, I'm wondering where I'm going to go back. Now, why go on the go to the kitchen, like, living?
You better now, man, it's more tow's.
So they're going to go in the garage, and then I'm going to have to get that 95-gallon two out of, to the front of the house, to the curb, and besides that, I'm going to have to tell all my neighbors on that block, don't park in front of my house, ever anybody parks in front of the house, or else I'm going to have to put those tow's in the middle of the street. That would be good.
You can, you can get small tow's, and I think a lot of, a lot of times, people think if the tow's around, they think it's automated services, that the drivers don't get out. You can park in front of the tow, the driver will get out and, and put it on the vehicle, so you don't have to not park in front of the street if he runs out.
Mayor, I think you ought to go back and get your, show up your pencil and come up with a better plan. You're dead set for this company, this company A, that's all you can preach, and so I think you need to come up with something better with your answer.
Well, I've said, I've said from the get-go that any, any options are acceptable, as long as we find a way to pay for trucks, if we want to continue. It's early, early time for me.
Do we have any comparisons to other cities, our size, that are using this?
Yes.
Do we see those?
Yes.
Because I can move here and run a city, from a town of $3,000, and we were paying $1 sticker at the time.
Sure.
I go to a town of $0.50, and it's a rate that's not the same.
Sure. We have, we have online on the garbage recycling, just comparison with other cities. To give you an idea, those cities that use garbage sticker, only options right now, pay an average of $3 a sticker. For those who have a fixed system where they charge monthly, the average monthly cost is about $15 a month. McCollum is about 17 to 18, Peoria is 13, and we have a chart that shows other cities where they're paying. So the average cost for people who utilize a sticker, only option, is about $3 a sticker for their charge. And I could only find 10 across the state alone, so there might be other cities, but I looked online myself, just to try to get an idea. Not a lot of cities operate a sticker-only program right now, so.
Actually, I think it's unconstitutional that you're going to put that on my water bill, and I do not want this.
Yes.
Because it's against the law, because it's constitutional right that they have a choice. You do not have a choice to automatically live in a place and put on my water bill. That's not fair.
I agree. Yes, sir. Yeah.
I've heard anybody suggest a three-market solution.
I've heard a lot of people talk about what size tow's, and trying to come up with a solution for everybody. Clearly, the city doesn't know how to run this properly long-term. I haven't heard anybody suggest a three-market solution, where the city no longer does it, and a lot of competition is solved, you know, if you want a big tow, you go with a company that has a big tow, you go with a company that has a little tow, if you want a little tow. But if you want to force everybody to go to one provider, that's like Comcast.
That's, that's, the city, the city could always choose to get out of the garbage recycling business.
Should we just get our own policeman head, and we should clean our own water? I mean, privatizing certain things when there's common to all of us isn't really fair either.
That's not a problem with you.
The city, right now, a lot of people right here are paying two or three bucks a month, and we're talking about $20 a month. I just think that three months go around, we have five, and so on the phone, it'd be 25 bucks, and I got to scale it to three. And then, the city's sending you letters, they try to charge you $20 per day, so you went round and round. I don't know, it's no hard, you know, but.
Uh, yes, yes, sir.
Is recycling cost effective?
We don't, I think it's good for the environment. Do we break, is it a, a, quote, money make for the city? No. We do about $70,000 a year of revenue from the sale of your stuff. Uh, I want carols.
Where am I recycling?
Carols. I've got these carols, all right, I'm trying to get around everybody. Yes, hold on, can we, can we get, uh, carols?
I have recycling somewhere.
Really, really fast.
Think about what your agenda is, and if your agenda is to think what's good, what's the common good for the city of Quincy, then you have to look to, what's our garbage recycling, what are we doing to help move this country from a city into the 20%? For example, why don't you consult somebody, VHS, well, planning ambulance systems, and one of a number of excellent consultants, who can come here and tell you the least expensive leasing recycling way to handle your string or our string of garbage? And instead, if you want testimonials as to how well it's done, and what its income's like, call and sit and use the, like Sam would say, if you want to have a good idea of what leasing is like, talk to the freaking school door, because we did, it was saving a hell of a lot of money.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Yeah, there's no doubt that the city has a problem. I think your leader probably wants to be a part of the solution and not part of the problem. But the thing is, let's look, let's look at what the, what the best options are for the city is. The best options are for not to give up control of a vital service that the city doesn't dispose depend on, to enforce the ordinance that you already got on the books. I mean, that, that's awesome, that that ordinance is on the books, and enforcing that ordinance, I mean, here's the app, and you can turn this thing around, and you can make it to where there's more recycling being done than there is right now, which is what needs to happen. And like somebody else mentioned, and I know this for a fact, because this is how it happens, I was a solid waste director for 18 years in the city of Florida. The minute you throw a 90-gallon cart out there, we may have recycle bins in the works, all going into garbage. But when you charge for garbage, and people are like, well, I don't want to get rid of it, I'm going to put it over here in the recycle bin, and then we're being diligent about doing it, and, and you're actually receiving money for recycling, which means recent revenue. But the bottom line is, we can't, we can't pay five bucks a month, or $4.50 a month, I pay like maybe four bucks a month for trucks, two trucks to come to my house and get my recycling, get my garbage. We can't do it, it's not feasible. I mean, let's not, not, let's not throw it out, let's just fix it and keep it.
Number one, you made a general statement about our box of recyclables, and I disagree. Somebody's trying to.
I don't know. I don't.
I can't tell you, can we, can we direct, direct, we should argue this, sir. And another new program, I'll be able to say. Can we get more of this getting about here, not that base information? The fact-based information is that when a company or a city outsources to professionals, they can do it better, and they can do it cheaper, and takes the variable cost away from the city, gas, unemployment, pensions, so on and so forth. Nobody knows what the cost is going to be 10 years from now, but if we didn't fix costs for 10 years, I think it's a win-win situation.
That's, that's your opinion.
Uh, gentlemen, and this is what, this is what we're here for, so being freely expressed our opinion, also, if ideas out, for us to consider, so that gentleman right, right Mr. Mayor, a couple of questions I hope you can answer. Yes. You know, first, depending on which program we go, I mean, you're going to be moving city employees around if we go with option A or B, or even if we go with the old city option, you know, the private haulers, the private haulers here in town, you know, they're going to move some of their employees around, which is going to be unfortunate, but with that being said, these other housing companies for 10 years, what's going to happen to the fuel surcharge every month that flushway goes up and down? What's going to happen to the landfill fees that go up and down every single month? Is that added in for 10 years? Is our water bill going to change every, every time they get it? Because those fees goes up and down, that cost has been in their bill, and they've given us a cost per year to deal with the service, and they're not going to be charged with this extra money. So you can tell me that when diesel goes up over $4 a gallon, the city's not going to get charged for that? Now, the company A or B is not going to charge us any more money if the, if the diesel fuel goes up above 90% under the 10 years, 90% here. No.
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at these costs together on this handout. Every monthly cost, in example number one for the city of Quincy, $24,000. Or if you go to number two, it's 1993, every monthly cost, I guess that's per household, right?
Yes.
Um, but the current cost is $625,000 generated by the stickers, and $950,000 or so generated or were going to require in the general fund to balance out the rest of the cost. That's only about one and a half of the, of these costs listed here range from $2.5 million to almost $3 million. But I realize that's 10 years ago, but.
The two things that we don't have included in our program right now, and why we're in this situation, is that we haven't set any money aside for trucks. So any proposals, we have setting money aside, that way no administration's faced with this, and we are also faced with, if we continue the program, to redo our contracts for landfill fees, which are going to be. contracts for landfill fees, which are gonna be increased, uh, uh, the cost for what we pay now.
So why don't we give the landfill their contract for ten years instead, and have them to give us a fixed cost? And why, why are our costs in, in the handout that you posted on there for the city, why are those costs rising so rapidly, when, and here's an even bigger question I have, how is it that any private company can do for five or ten percent less than what you predicted the city could do? How can they do that plus forty percent more customers?
Uh, it's, I mean, again, they don't have fixed costs, they don't have the, uh...
Is also more efficient?
Does that mean, does that mean more efficient? You mean, the guy who works for the private company suddenly gets efficient?
No, it's, it's, no, it's, it's technology onboard, for example, with the, the way the private corporations work, they have a route, they have a route now because they know who our, who their customers are. We can't with a garbage sticker, we can't know who our customers are, I might sit a bag out one day, and then I'll use our service again for another month. Uh, but what I'm saying is, they have their customers, and they have their routes onboard, and so they can track all of their routes and make it efficient, and they also have, they also have hundreds of thousands of customers, they know the best practices of their industry, we have, you know, we don't have that same hours basis, they do.
At one point, I think you have two hundred fifty-one thousand dollars maintaining this program?
It's two hundred, it's two hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Just this garbage per second?
That's just, that's a yearly, a yearly, uh, maintenance.
Or garbage per second, or for the city foot?
Garbage per second.
So, I reckon, um, our budget was two point eight four million.
Two hundred eighty thousand dollars?
No, two point eight four million dollars for the entire year, running the whole city blocks, the whole city foot, uh, the garbage for recycling, uh, two hundred fifty-one...
Two hundred eighty thousand dollars, and, and what we did is, we looked at what was charged back to the department over, over the years.
Over the years?
Oh, yeah, we said a yearly maintenance fee, what was charged back to the city, um, from, because they charge for the work that they do, um, and what is being charged, ask that number then.
Okay, one other quick question. Two thousand two, when we bought the first trucks, we had seven-year lifespan, it was supposed to put money back every year, never happened, what's gonna happen this time, if we did go with the re-trucks?
Well, that's where, you know, we, we said, why, why is this cost gonna go? So that way we can set money aside back for these trucks, that way no council, uh, no administration's faced with that, or any decision.
It's the same thing over to, uh, exactly the same.
Well, I, I wasn't wrong there, and, you know, I can't say that, but, yeah, I'm just, I'm telling you, we're trying to ride along here, we're trying to do what, what human expenses to do with our tax hours, um, you know?
If something rises, can we take that money? Uh, we'll, we'll forgive it, just stay, stay low on ours, example, on that one.
Yeah.
One thing, Mr. Mayor, on this, on this contract, if you go with any of these companies, if you go with any of these companies for ten years, and you're basically getting rid of the city's garbage fleet and recycling fleet, privatizing that, now we don't have more trucks, now we don't even have any workers, ten years from now, you've got two five-year renewal actions in a row, that the city and the presumed contract group agree to. What kind of leverage on those renewals will the city have, when they don't have any infrastructure whatsoever to do it ourselves?
I think, uh, I think what, what we're lucky is fifteen thousand homes, and from what I understand about the waste management business, is that their current operations of the city of Quincy is essentially toward, they gotta go to a house, and they gotta say, sign up for my service, they gotta go to a business and say, sign up to my service. Rarely do does a waste management company have the ability to get fifteen thousand customers with a bid, and there, there are cities, Fury, Illinois, that have private haulers now for over thirty years, and their cost is cheaper than thirteen dollars a month. So if there was the fact that the waste management companies, the jack fees up after their, after their original contract ran off, I think you would see it in other cities.
And what's their recycling like?
They, same, I think, they pick it up in the product, it's all included in their enterprise, thirty thousand. Yes, they're sorry, and that's, and it's the two bands, it's a, it's a similar situation. So I think there's always a fear that, you know, in the twenty years, there's gonna be a drastic price increase, but I think that we would see that in other communities, we would see it if you were in Illinois, we've been privatized for over thirty years, being at twenty-two dollars a month, when in fact they're at thirteen.
Because they just have one company.
They have one company doing, a, a, a single company.
Well, the bottom line, we're not seeing a drastic price increase historically over the past ten years. You talk about unstable revenue streams, when in fact, that's six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars or so, it's fluctuated in the past five, six years, it became six hundred thousand, up as far as six hundred twenty-five thousand generated by separate fees. That's a variance of two percent, two percent from the baseline average of six hundred twelve and a half thousand. Two percent, that's not a big fluctuation or variance, that's not an unstable revenue stream, I think most businesses would get their lead arm for revenue stream, that steady.
I think you're misunderstanding my statement, the, the statement is, if we raise our prices up, and don't enforce our ordinance, we are not gonna be able to know what a revenue stream is, because of the fact that normally we raise prices up, it's likely, if we don't enforce our ordinance, that people are gonna go with private haul.
I have a question.
Yes.
What if you raised the sticker price to a dollar instead of fifty cents, and then enforced this ordinance that you are talking about?
We could do that.
So why don't you enforce the ordinance that the city has?
We could do that, but that would be, we could do that. We can, we can do that, it also means that the, that, as, as the council, and as the city, we have to be prepared to do that, that ordinance has not been enforced for, you know, recent memory, and so then, if you have area, you have outline, we enforce that ordinance, then again, there's gonna be someone happy people who doesn't say, hey, I, you know, I, I contract out, so...
So when was the ordinance put into place, and can you explain it?
Well, the, the ordinance, the ordinance was, sure, the ordinance was in place, I at least think in, in the nineties, I don't know, maybe it's sooner, but the reason why cities have a one-provider ordinance or a law, is that way they can regulate the waste management of the city, they can regulate the proper disposal of waste, and that's to make sure that, uh, companies or themselves are following proper EPA guidelines. That was a big deal in the eighties and nineties, you know, there's a big push on the EPA to make sure that people were properly throwing their waste, and that's why they do it, and also, when you don't have a regulated system, you end up not being able to regulate if people throw their trash or not, and then you also have people throwing trash, uh, if you don't regulate in some way, in your sewers, in your parks, and, and you have other reasons for that.
So what are the city's costs, because people monitor that, so that the regulations are...
What are the city's costs? We have, we have our, our supervision of that. Yes, sorry.
Okay. I'm sure, remember, if I have numbers, do you know, if you were to give us that, you have to, remind me about the end of the month, our next decision to switch over, and on start with our first year, our private pickup, and if you get tired, do you know, tell us, and we'll go in for suggestions?
No, uh, what I, what I said was, if we are to make a change by our next budget year, because next budget year is May first, that, that we need to make a decision by the end of the year, because we have to purchase new trucks, or if we have to privatize, those companies will need to order trucks to be able to service our community. So that's why the, and, when we're putting our budget together for next April, we want a budget that reflects the services we're gonna go, that's why that, that, that was set up.
And probably should be letting the citizens a lot more time to think about this, and discuss this, than when we can do this.
Well, there's not a, there's not a goal, yeah, and there's...
The park has really flooded the city.
Sure, and there's not a goal, and that's one of the reasons why I'm having these conversations, is to say, okay, how we heard from citizens, what have we heard that is powerful, and can we come up with some proposals that, that makes their needs?
All we have is, is more bids, and not other, we don't have a single other proposal, other than a couple of charts up here, for how this could be done, and still kept in the city's hands, and we hang onto that valuable asset, we're able to promote recycling, and, and we're sharing costs, so that poor, and even the lower middle class are not getting hit with a three-hundred percent rate increase. How are we gonna do that? Let's have a couple of...
And, gentlemen...
Mayor?
Yes?
How are you waiting? Do you have a question for both of these people, you say on page fourteen, city of Quincy, project name of work, complete report, on the ballot, December thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, that's about to end of the month?
Well, that's, that's because we, we needed to know, uh, for the companies, if we go with that, they need to buy trucks and order services by May first, that's why that was on there. Well, that's why, that's why we said by the end of the month, when we go through to privatize, because of the fact they would need to purchase new trucks, and it was a right there, yes?
I apologize, I have a, a few, uh, two, I'm looking at, and, and, and in the, the city of Quincy, is that, those numbers are like, things off the eighty-six hundred and something, or something like that?
That's the service eighty-six hundred pounds.
I guess what I'm looking at is, is for last year, the numbers, that is, not as scaled, by more than eighty-six hundred and fifteen thousand, and these other companies are bidding on fifteen thousand, about thirty-nine eighty-six hundred, so I didn't see a one cent of that.
The, uh, like you said, the cost for us to live off fifteen thousand is quite, quite substantial. We'll go, we'll get one more, we'll get one more question, and I will, after we're closed, I will be here all night long, as long as it takes. This gentleman has missed opening.
Why don't we raise stickers for our, for our, okay?
Yes.
Put a half some sales tags on, and zero, negative, or a, I'm a perfect listener.
Thank you for being here, I appreciate, uh, your feedback.
Wait, it seems to me that this shouldn't just end where we all go home and don't have anybody to talk to. So for instance, you were talking about recycling, for anyone who's interested in recycling, like, you can continue this conversation over here, whoever you are, we simply have some numbers, by the way. So what, what about, if you want to play numbers, and you don't wanna privatize, go over and talk to that guy over there, and let's continue the conversation, because I don't want, I don't want frustration, right? If you don't want, come over here.